Thank you, sir.
Father God, we thank you today for the blessings we receive from your hand. For the life that you give us, we don't take it for granted, and now for the opportunity to serve you and your people, we pray for your wisdom tonight and grant us a sense of common direction and unity as we proceed. All this, we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dr. Wilson. Okay, the mayor had something come up, he can't be here, so as Vice Mayor, I will call the meeting to order, and Eva, can we go through the roll call, please?
Mayor Holbrook, Councilmember Rose.
Here.
Councilmember Wilson.
Here.
Councilmember Hayes.
Here.
Councilmember set up.
Okay. Well, we have really two major topics of interest tonight before us, and I know the Lake Placid Camping Conference Center water and wastewater issues has been a long-going and complex thing, and so with the council's approval, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Harris to walk us through the various actions we need to contemplate taking tonight, if that's okay. Mr. Harris.
I'd like to invite Matt and Dr. Wilson to the front to have a seat at the microphones.
Come up to me.
At the front of the desks and have a seat with microphones, and Corbett, you might grab the other and...
You'll have to turn the microphones on.
Corbett, why don't you go to that one, and let's let Joe have the microphone. Corbett, why don't you go to that one, and let's let Joe come up and have the microphone, so we're not hollering all the way across the room at him. We've had quite a few discussions, which I think have brought us to a point that I'd like to give a speech of where I think we are, and Matt can either interrupt or at the end correct or revise or extend my remarks. Tonight, we need to consider and hopefully adopt the grant loan agreement with the Department of Environmental Protection. That agreement has been, that loan grant was granted many months ago, and they have taken issue with the delay in getting that done. So we think with one correction, no, that's in the third agreement, we think that it's ready to go. That's the agreement that gets us a lot of the money. Joe, do you have a summary of the grants, the three grants that we have acquired for this project and the totals?
Yeah, and I'll ask Corbett to help. There is a, the RIF grant is $570,000, and that grant was basically singled out the two lift station upgrades. Then there is also a...
$600,000, septic to sewer.
Yep, and that was a DEP federal wastewater grant. And then the large amount is an SRF grant, which, what's the total on that one?
1.8 million.
1.8. And then remind us what the grant loan portion is.
1.5 million grant.
All right, 1.5 million grant, and then...
A little over 300 in loan.
Correct.
So that leaves a net of 300, a little over 300,000 that the conference center will pay, and that's a total of how much total grant, Corbett? 1.5 plus 600 is 2.1 plus 570, did you say?
Yes, sir.
2.1, 2.6, 2.67.
2.67.
2.97?
570, 600.
Was it 1,800, 600, and 570?
Yes.
Okay, 2.97.
Okay.
The, without going into all of the depth of the size of the line, we have been planning a line at six inches in diameter from the Camping Conference Center to the current system. We have agreed also to the upgrade of two of the lift stations. One lift station would barely work with the added material. The other lift station would work with the added material. Joe and I have taken the position that we did not want to give away the town's capacity into those to the conference center, that we wanted those to be funded through the grant. The conference center has agreed. So the grants should bring those up to par where it will accept the wastewater from the conference center and give us some extra capacity. We have the engineers' estimates, but let me back up. The total money that you just heard discussed, a million, 2,900,000, with 300,000 is still to be repaid as a loan, assumes the contract for construction comes in at the estimated number. If the contract is higher, the loan will be higher. If the contracts are lower, the loan will be lower. So at this point, we don't know the number of 300-plus. That remains the engineer's, the source, the product of the engineer's estimate against the grants and loans.
And I'll state, that's correct. For the record, and for the record, this is Matt Taylor on behalf of the Lake Placid Camping Conference Center. That is correct. We agree with that.
And I would like to add that DEP will amend the agreement based on bids and actual prices up or down without a problem.
And is it possible we get more money from DEP if the prices go up?
Yes.
Possible, that's a broad word, no commitment.
It has been done before.
Okay. Joe's data, Joe, you recall when we did the $40 million wastewater grant, took the position that he wanted to see how all of the system worked with the addition of all of the added systems, the one from Lake June to Lake Placid, South Town, as well as the conference center. So Joe has had Kimmerly Horn model that, and it shows that really an eight-inch line is needed between the Camping Conference Center and the town, because it looks as though we will be bringing additional sewage from south of Lake Placid, meaning the camp, Highway 29 plant, as well as North Lake Placid, South Lake Placid, the lake, through that one line. So that's going to cause that one to need to be increased in size. That leaves a discussion between the Camping Conference Center and the town of who pays the cost of the increase. Of course, the Camping Conference Center has said that's a late arrival to the party. We've planned on and cooperated going up to six. We've gotten the grants for the town. Of course, they're all town grants or taxpayer money. So the Camping Conference Center think the town should pay for that. I'll let Matt give his sermon the way he wants it in a few moments, but I'm just trying to frame the issues. Joe and Bert are saying, yeah, but it's all state money, it's grants, it's our grants, so we think the Camping Conference Center should eat the cost of the upgrade to eight inches. In truth, it is going to be both Camping Conference Center sewage and other sewage from the rest of our system. So you guys get to make the decision of who pays the cost of increasing the line from six inches to eight inches and increasing the pumps, because they also will have to go up in the Camping Conference Center lift station, because they have to make a certain volume of flow to keep the line clean. Joe will also interrupt me, I've got two people promising to interrupt me, Joe and Matt, if I screw this up.
You're good.
In the meantime, to go to bid, no, we can go to bid with a six-inch line, and there is a debate between Bert and Matt and the engineers over whether we can say, as an alternate, Mr. bidder, add in an eight-inch line. There are certain inherent risks with that, because the eight-inch line is not completely designed, it would entail a note on the, in the construction documents saying, bid it both ways, for six-inch, eight-inch, or rather, and in the eight-inch option, assume these larger pumps. We really need Matt to weigh in and help us with the assumptions, and Matt needs Joe's data from Kimmerly Horn, and we hope to have that put together, I'm going to guess now in the next two weeks before the next council meeting.
That's correct.
Now, that's not a design at eight inches, that is simply the estimates that we'll go to bid on for the eight inches.
That's right.
It still has to be designed and permitted. We have the permit for the six-inch, we do not have a permit for the eight-inch. So before we accept bids to construct an eight-inch, we would have to have DEP granting us a permit for the eight-inch. Matt has indicated he can rely, he thinks, upon the data Joe is bringing from Kimmerly Horn about the additional flows going into it, save some time and expense for that. Oh, by the way, in addition to paying the cost of the upgrade of the pumps and the eight-inch line, he's not said this, but I'm sure that the conference center would like us to pay the additional cost of design work. Those three elements. My recommendation tonight is to adopt several of these documents that you've seen circulated, knowing that the number will change, and that you'll see that number in a couple of spots. One is the total number, just over 300,000, the debt that the conference center will be paying us. The other is the monthly payment that amortizes that debt over 10 years without interest in monthly payments. We have an agreement with the conference center, now this is the one that's very careful to, because this is your decision to accept this agreement and this risk, if you will. If we have the discussion with the conference center over whether the conference center pays the all or a portion of the upgrade, eight inches and the pumps, we've kind of got a little bit of leverage today, because we haven't entered these agreements. So the agreement is, we're going to do these agreements today, we're going to send them to DEP, but Camping Conference Center realizes, we're not giving up the leverage by doing that, that if we don't come to terms on who pays the upgrade cost, we can revoke these agreements and they will be null and void. Is that correct? Have I stated it?
That is correct. We understand and expect that these numbers will change, not only based upon what the final bids and loan amounts come in, but we expect that, obviously, we don't want to pay any upgrade costs. You're going to right now say, well, you need to pay all the upgrade costs. We realize that the agreement is probably going to lie somewhere in between that, and I'm sure we can work it out, and we fully expect that that final number will change, not only based upon award, but based upon responsibility for that upgrade to eight inches.
Joe, do you need to add anything to that?
I don't think so.
I would just add one thing to that. The estimates for the construction of the cost do fit the 1.8 million of SRF plus the 570,000 of RIF Rural Infrastructure Fund for the septic, the sewer lift station upgrades, and the 600,000 of septic to sewer is extra. So you have $600,000 of additional funds that you could, for the cost of the project, for the total cost. So what we're talking about is potential costs that go beyond the 2.9 million. You would want, I'm assuming you would want to maximize the use of all grant dollars first.
Absolutely. I believe the 600,000 has already been included in the cost estimates.
No, sir.
So that's an extra 600,000 that I think we would propose goes towards the upgrade, possibly.
Are you telling me that right now the $600,000 is uncommitted?
Correct.
What do we have an issue about then?
We don't have, I think I can summarize this then. Bert and I are going to get on the phone and probably wrap this issue up pretty quick after talking to Joe and Corbett, but the goal of it is, the understanding is, we wanted to make sure we were clear with you today, is that we expect these numbers to change, up or down, probably up. It's not our intention to hold your feet to the fire or lose the leverage that you have currently on this. If there's another $600,000 there that's unspoken for, so be it. The only other issue we have with respect to the upgrade is a timing issue. I don't want to jump in front of you there, Bert, but one of the things we're going to talk about tonight is a letter that's going to go to the FDIP on an extension of time for dispersing the funds from the SRF. Originally, they were supposed to be dispersed in March. The SRF said to us, and Corbett can correct me if I'm wrong, look, guys, you need to tell us what you've done and what you're working on, that you're rowing the boat in the same direction, so we can extend the time to disperse that money. Bert and I are kicking around a letter that we think looks pretty good. We need to wordsmith it a little bit more, and one of the things we want to add to that letter, as it felt in suspenders, is language that talks about our timing, in terms of shovel-in-the-ground timing. That is driven partially by that upgrade and the plans and the time to get it out to bid, but I'm working on Carl Baracco, who'll be the ones putting together the plans for it, to send out for bid. Joe's folks, Kimmerly Horn, are going to sign off on and stamp the flow calculations, the hydraulics, if you will, that Carl Baracco was uncomfortable with. Carl stated he can use that, save some time, save some money, it's already done, and move forward with the planning. So the, and I'm sorry for jumping ahead on this one, Bert, but the...
Doing fine.
But the goal on this is to tie everything up with a bow. The last bit of it will be that extension of time to disperse that money and give the folks at FDIP and SRF not only a reason to grant the extension, which according to Corbett, they'll do out of hand, as long as we're doing the letter the right way, but also let them know where we're going. That ties back to my client's responsibility. Dr. Wilson has to give the FDIP quarterly reports on where we are with the consent order. That allows us also to say, hey, by the way, this is where we are in the process with the funding, this is where we are in the process with the contracting, and this is where we are in the process with bid. So it all ties together.
All true.
We're on the same page, I believe.
Now, let's talk about the 600. I sure was under the impression, when that came in months ago, that that was dedicated to this project, and you're telling me that has not been spent on this project yet?
It has not been encumbered yet. It is, it is for this project. It is a grant for this project, but it is above and beyond the engineer's cost estimate. So it's available for a higher bid.
So if we bid for a higher cost, period. It's there to take the eight-inch.
It can, it can.
So we end up with no problem with the Camping Conference Center, and that would also end up with them paying little, if any, it sounds like, if the math is correct.
Yes, sir. And I can tell you quite candidly, and I've shared this with Bert, Carl Baracco's estimate on the upgrade for construction, planning, and permitting costs is around 250,000, or equates to a little over $20 a foot.
So that's the pipe difference cost and the pump upgrades?
That is pipe and fittings, and he guesstimated on the pump. He's got to tighten that up a little bit, but it's going to come in around that 250,000 number is what he believes. It might be slightly over that.
Okay.
And if I might, Mr. Hayes, do you have any questions so far?
So far, I'm good.
Mr. Wilson, any other questions so far?
So if it's 250, that was on, the total number was figured. It, that still gives us a little bit more room on additional, you know, overruns on the construction costs, which are probably going to...
It should leave 350,000 plus or minus out there. Yes, sir.
Okay. You're good. Okay, go ahead, back to Mr. Hayes.
I want to ask Corbett, will you send us an accounting of how those three grants work together on the estimates to date?
Yes, I can do an email on that.
Thank you. Any question before we walk through the documents? The meeting, and if Corbett comes back and we've not, and that 600 has already been applied, we're still going to have this discussion.
Right.
If it has not, and it's available, the discussion gets real easy.
You just have to do some math.
We have to do some math.
From my simplified mind, Matt, Bert, we only really have a consideration if the project projects to be much more than 2.9 million dollars. Otherwise, we're just using grant money.
I think that's about correct.
Okay.
And none of us have gotten bids in, so we don't know what the contracts are going to be.
I will tell you this, based upon the initial estimates, obviously, the initial estimates were relatively high for the time, and I get the Blue Book updates, you know, twice a month at least, and I'm looking at it, and materials have, fortunately, materials have kind of leveled off a little bit, so I'm not as frightened as I used to be.
Okay. So Mr. Harris, I know we have a series of...
The mouse, yes.
Mr. Royce?
Yes, sir. Dr. Wilson.
Just a real quick comment, and just to clarify, a comment was made that there's, the conference center wouldn't pay anything. Couple of, couple of things. One is, the loan is a set deal. I mean, we're obligated to that. We don't get the other money unless we also have the loan. So at least 375,000 is coming from the conference center on this project. I'd love for us to come under budget, that'd be wonderful. My experience has been, when you're over budget, right? So I don't want to burst anybody's bubble, but I'm encouraged by the numbers.
I'm not sure what you just said. Try that again.
So 375,000 is the loan.
That's what we all, that's what Bert and Matt had been operated under until Corbett said, no, you haven't put in the 600.
No, it's two different things. So the SRF funding for the wastewater, the 1.8 million...
Only 1.5 of that is grant.
1.5 of that is grant. 375,000 of that is loan to the Camp and Conference Center. You don't get the 1.5 unless we pay the 375. So that never, that doesn't go away.
Regardless of how much we spend, you're all going to, you're going to pay back 375.
Yeah.
So even if the other grant comes through and has room in it, the 600,000, that can't pay the 375?
No.
No.
Okay.
But it can pay that.
It can pay our upgrades.
But it's a heck of a lot less than 2.9.
It's a great deal.
370 is a lot less than 2.9. Okay.
I have a question for Mr. Robert. Joe, what would you estimate if we were to go ahead from the six to the eight and the pump design changes for approval from DEP on the timeline? How long does that?
So this is where Carl and I seem to not agree. I would think you could work with DEP and just do a minor modification of that permit, probably just a letter mod, telling them that we're going to bump the size to an eight. And then, what they've let me do in the past is, you then give them the correct ASBILs when it goes in. So I don't think it's that big of a deal, but that being said, everybody's so busy right now that that probably is what's playing into his timeframe. The one thing they will have to look at is their own lift station and make sure those pumps will work with an eight. So there is some work, but I think the actual permitting side of it, my thoughts are, that should be fairly simple. You know, it's just a matter of getting the whole DEP and letting them know that there's an urgency here, and I think you could just handle that with a letter mod, saying, we're going to change it to an eight, although the problem is, I don't think Carl agrees with me. I think he wants to send in a set of plans that show an eight. So that, I think that's a little bit of the rub there.
So the plans would have to be modified and then resubmitted?
So the way I have done it in the past is, I've done a letter mod to DEP, letting them know, hey, we're planning on doing this as an eight. They've agreed, and then they agreed with the fact that I provide them the ASBILs that show this all an eight. So once it gets built, we then send them the plans that show ASBILs as it's an eight.
Okay.
So, I mean, because really, all DEP needs to know, they don't care what size it is, they just need to know what the calculations, make sure it all works, and I don't know that they necessarily need a set of plans, they're more interested in ASBILs. So if we just did a letter mod, show them the calc's, I think they'll give you the thumbs up.
Are they required in information on the new pump sizing, potentially?
Possibly, but I mean...
But that could be handled similarly?
I think so, and that's just my opinion. I haven't talked to DEP, I don't know. So that's a pure opinion.
I can add a little bit, I talked to Carl about it. I don't disagree with anything Joe said, and I think that the issue that our, Carl Baracco has, is it so much the permitting? It is the design of those plans, it's going to take some time to run through, so to get them ready for bid, is the, is the holdup. But I, having been through that process myself for clients and whatnot with FDIP, I think everything Joe just said, I think you're absolutely right. I think that, you know, as long as you can provide them with those calculations, which, you know, Joe's already got through Kimmerly Horn, showing that, hey, this will work, here's the hydraulic calculations on the, on the system. As long as you can show them that's it, and say, we're going to modify it to eight-inch, the valves are going to increase, pump sizes are going to increase accordingly, you know, as far as curves go on the pumps and whatnot, there's standards out there that they can cite, and then at the end of the day, whether it was six-inch, four-inch, or eight-inch, they're going to require a good set of ASBILs on it anyway. So I think the biggest holdup from Carl Baracco's perspective is just producing a new plan set for bid. Because I can tell you, everything's ready to go, as far as the bid package goes, with the proposed contract and the magic language that the SRF and FDIP wants.
For a six-inch.
For a six-inch, we've got to assert the eight-inch stuff into it now, so, and that's the only, that's the only thing that Bert and I are going to be talking about as it applies to that letter that we're going to send, is trying to give some timeline in it.
And I guess that's...
You got a commitment from Carl as to how long that's going to take him, now that we've got the Kimmerly Horn?
I spoke to him today on the drive over here, and he was going to work on tightening that up, that was his exact words, and I expect to talk to Carl tomorrow, so that when Bert and I get on the phone, we've got a, we've got a window there that we can rely upon.
Did he make any comment on, as Joe was saying, a letter mod that we could bid from?
He did not, but I will ask about that tomorrow when I speak to him. Letter mod didn't come up on it, but he, he did, we did talk about the permitting, and he said that, you know, as far as permitting goes, we can probably get away with not being as detailed, I'm paraphrasing.
Yeah, and I guess that's the difference, is I have done several projects where it says six-inch on the plans, and then I just have a bid alternate to literally, you know, because on the six-inch, you're going to have all the different line items, and it all says six-inch, you just reproduce that with eight for everything and let them bid on it. So we have done projects like that, but Carl, Carl's, I guess, not comfortable doing that.
And I don't know what the...
Yeah.
I hadn't talked to him specifically about it, and understand that the, the part of the discussion was driven by, Dr. Wilson brought it up, and then Bert brought it up as well, when we talked, was, look, let's not make this an alternate. If the town wants eight-inch, then you should have eight-inch there, and let's not leave something open as an alternative in a bid that's going to get us into a situation where six months down the road, we're arguing with a contractor about pricing or something that's open-ended, or, you know, let's tighten it up and, right now, and get everything as definitive as we possibly can out of the box.
Matt is absolutely correct on that. If you leave something uncertain in bid documents, it is either a lawsuit or you're writing a bigger check.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Hayes, you still good so far in the conversation?
I'm still good, yes.
From my perspective, it's very important that everyone understands we are going to put in an eight.
We do.
We're not talking about sixes anymore, we're doing eight.
We understand.
Okay. So is everyone, if council members are ready, Mr. Harris, why don't you walk us through the first resolution, and then we'll entertain some motions.
The first document in the agenda package is the grant loan agreement with FDIP that Corbett has worked on and tendered. I've made one change in it, it's paragraph 19, it's on your screen. That's where it went from a pledge of our revenue, you remember the Burton-Corbett Show one night here. So this puts in the language that clarifies, we will be pledging the bulk service agreement. How that will work is our town code establishes utility rates for all God's children in Lake Placid hooked up to that system. So the Camping Conference Center will pay that sum of money to process their hockey, however much it is, it is. In addition to that, they have, by contract, a bulk service agreement, which you'll see shortly, agreed to pay us another lump of money, which will be used to pay back the 370,000 more or less debt. No, well, I'll say it that way, I don't know, started to say it won't be any more, but we don't know, I guess, at this point.
Whatever their debt is.
Yes, it gets amortized over 10 years, no interest, because it's a pass-through. The conference center pays it to us, and we pay it directly to FDIP, and that is the SRF State Revolving Fund Utility Grant. SRF State Revolving Fund Utility Grant, this is a document you've seen in your agenda package more than once, we've killed a lot of trees over it, so unless you have particular questions, I'll move on from this one.
Well, what, look, can we, Mr. Harris, can we take them one at a time, or not?
Why don't you let me walk through and show how they work together?
Okay.
And then let's do them. So that would be a standalone document?
Bert, I would like to point one thing out that nobody's really paid attention to, as part of this loan agreement, we're required to produce an asset management plan, which we don't currently have a full-blown deal, so that's going to be a cost and some work that the town will have to do in order to, to obtain this grant loan.
But we're capable of doing that.
I don't know that we are in-house, so either a consultant may have to help us, you know, I've got a lot of the stuff mapped, but we're probably gonna have to go out and evaluate things, I mean, there's a whole list of things we have to do to come up with this plan, so it's, it's basically a project we're gonna have to do.
Are you familiar with that, Corbett?
I am.
How extensive do they expect?
You can do the minimum, but you've got to at least do the minimum, they're, they have samples, we could get a sample asset management plan from them, we could get some guidance from them on what they would accept.
Will you undertake that? Will you undertake that?
I sure will.
Any other questions on the agreement? Unless, let me go ahead and say this out loud, if it comes in to be another expensive project, that would be on top, and on the Conference Center to fund?
Yeah, I believe that, and I'm, I was just telling Dr. Wilson candidly, that I think that under our first agreement, or it might even be the second one, those cost obligations are on our plate.
That was, that was my point, I just didn't want a surprise, the next document is the resolution, and it would pledge the bulk agreement that we'll get to after this, this is your resolution. If I could get back where I'm supposed to be. Oh, wrong mouse, thank you.
Monthly service.
Too many mice. Okay, this agreement says who we are, the whereas is basically, say, the references the project and the fact that we own the system, paragraph two, or three rather, references our bulk service agreement, which, again, you're going to see next, it's entered the same day, today, and it defines the amount of money the Camp and Conference Center will pay us, and then section four shows that it's a monthly fee. And then section five says, the camp and, that the town, that that rate will be paid, pledged to the State Revolving Fund, whatever the bulk service agreement produces is leaned and encumbered, and that's the only thing encumbered by SRF loan, the three hundred seventy thousand dollar loan, so this facilitates the pass-through, Camp and Conference Center pays us under the bulk service, by this, section five, we pledge that money to the SRF. Any questions on the pledge?
Any questions, Mr. Wilson, Ms. Hayes? I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Let's go to section four, does that number potentially change?
That number is the number that will change.
So when we, when someone makes a motion, what do, what, how do we need to address section four for that number, or do we need to?
Let me get to the end, and we'll work on the motion.
And then a very small thing, also with this resolution, minor thing, somewhere up in section one or two, it says the mayor was presiding, I don't want us to be sending something off, and so.
You're right.
Eva, please correct that, you know, so we don't make a mistake.
We'll correct that to Vice Mayor Royce.
Okay.
I, I have a question also. I guess it's a little confusing, I just want to make sure we understand that this is not the only fees that the Camp and Conference Center will be paying for service, will be paying their normal usage fees based on usage as well, like, I don't know that this agreement actually spells that out, or distinguishes the two.
I perceive it doesn't need to, right, this is just what we're gonna give to the state.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
I can say also, it's addressed in paragraph one of the actual bulk service agreement.
Just checking.
I read it somewhere else.
Yes, it's said more than once. This is the third agreement, remember, we had the first agreement with the Camp and Conference Center that said, yep, we're undertaking the project, and it set out most of the main agreements, everything from annexation, water, and sewer, the second agreement made clear that they're paying all the costs of the town, in hopes of getting the grants, which have in fact come to fruition, this is the third agreement between the Camp and Conference Center, and it further refines. Are there any questions on this one? These first several paragraphs are simply reciting what we've done in the past.
Under five, do you need to change that date?
Yes, we do. We will, paragraph five, change to seven twenty. Wrong mouse, again.
It was the twentieth of July?
Yeah, today.
Oh, this was the original, we're, paragraph five talks about the original utility services agreement.
See, twenty's twenty.
The very first one.
That's twenty, sorry.
I was thinking that was, I read that too quickly, you're right, it's correct as written.
I was just thinking it was something we thought we were gonna do two weeks ago, and we didn't do.
No, well, there are those, we've had plenty of those.
Okay.
But no, this is the first agreement that I mentioned, it set out the bulk of the deal.
Okay.
And then we reflect the grants and loans, wastewater system improvement funding.
And I might add, Bert, that paragraph six is the one that I was referring to earlier, that reimbursement agreement, that's where that cost was, it's on our shoulders, through the reimbursement agreement that we entered to, was the second agreement.
That's correct, the second agreement is set out there, or summarized there. This is the third agreement in the series, it deals with wastewater, we've done a resolution authorizing the application for the grant loan, we've talked about the system improvements, the two lift stations I discussed earlier, they have been included, there's that statement, we probably don't need to set them out, but Matt and I agreed to leave it in, because paragraph thirteen shows that those are now being paid by one of the grants, so we didn't have to get into the fistfight over who was gonna pay for them, then we recite the obligations of the district. And the obligations of the town.
Bert, if I, if I may?
Sure.
Just so everybody knows where it's defined, because it comes up in the, in the bulk services agreement, in sub-paragraph fourteen J, that talks about the net debt, and the understanding there being that it's whatever is still owed on that outstanding loan amount at any time, because here shortly, as a preview, we're gonna, we drafted so the net debt is trued up annually, and you'll see why that's important in a little, in a little while, but in case anybody's wondering where it's defined later, this is where it is.
The debt, we didn't know initially how big it would be, still don't, quite frankly, so we've used these terms to show whatever it is, it is. This says we're going to execute and proceed with. And we have our conditions precedent. I would like the latitude to change base service charge to reflect the term bulk service agreement, or tie it together, because it's supposed to be, so here's your Bert bulk service paragraph, we ended up taking out all the terms, or most of the terms, out of this document, and putting them in the actual bulk service agreement, we had them here initially because we were going to rely just on this, but Matt and I think agreed that it would be better to send only a two-pager to the, to DEP showing the bulk service, and not all the other terms, because it could raise a whole bunch more questions of, why'd you do this, why'd you do that, and it would tie in agreements one, two, and now this third one, so we pulled them out of here, and we have a separate standalone. This paragraph is a relic, I took it out of one of our documents and mistaking it out of this one, it goes away, there is no pioneering agreement for.
Wastewater.
Wastewater, there is a pioneering agreement for water, and we're not changing any of that.
And then only under very strict terms for water, it's not just if Matt Taylor builds a house by himself on the road, it's only if there's a development goes in, Bert, another issue that I just wanted to raise, we're aware of, for council, in paragraph seventeen, it talks about the collateral, the collateral is the pledge of those bonds that we talked about earlier, we're ready to pull the trigger on that, the thought is, is, once these are done, Dr. Wilson and I can go to the bonding company and get the ball rolling on that, but we're ready to go on that, and that's a hundred fifteen percent.
Remember that we do not have a lien on the district land securing this debt, they did not want to encumber the land, and we have previously agreed, and I believe the first agreement, to accept a bond as collateral. Nineteen comes out, I'll renumber everything else, no other changes, that I recall, Matt, did you have any other?
No, sir.
This was my opinion, is my opinion letter that I'll issue to State FR, SRF, saying the bulk rate service charge for the Conference Center will be pledged to secure the loan, and I'm saying, yep, the town honors that, we also say that the town has the authority to increase our rates to pay any shortfall, that's something that Corbett tells me SRF looks for, we've got it covered four ways from Sunday, so that we shouldn't have to, but that makes SRF comfortable.
If you go back for just a minute.
Yes, ma'am.
Keep going down, right there, this, this paragraph right here, it says, the bulk rate surcharge will be net revenue, and the surcharge, this basically says, that the bulk rate service charge, there it is, will be over and above the rate charged by the town ordinance to collect and treat, so what you're asking before, it's over and above.
Correct.
Okay.
Meaning we are not pledging any of the, what I will call, normal revenue from that, we are only pledging the loan repayment.
Money, basically.
Correct. Okay.
So make sure we're on the same page.
Thank you.
And I believe Corbett has, I think I saw an email, correct me if I'm wrong, Corbett, that you've actually reviewed that with DEP, and they have agreed to that concept.
Yes, they have, they have agreed to that concept.
All right. Where is the bulk service agreement? It's not in here.
That was just it, wasn't it?
No, I don't think so, that was my letter.
No, go, go back, keep going.
That was the pledge of the bulk service agreement.
I know, we looked at it before, didn't we?
It's not in this package.
If you know the language, Bert, you can search it, there it is, right there.
Yeah.
If you click on bulk service agreement in that computer, it's there, look at the page number, Bert, if it's, if it's on one, if it's on one.
Give that to him, I don't know, I'll screw that up.
Fifty-five.
What page? Fifty-five of fifty-eight, is that the?
That's what I got.
I mean, that's what you're talking about, that document right there?
Yes.
It's in there.
Good, I didn't see it, worried I ran past it.
I don't know, but I read it.
Good.
Read the whole thing.
There.
There it is.
Now can I have that clicker back?
There's the red mouse.
Correct mouse.
You know, the red mouse works for you too.
You're familiar with the concept of a note and a mortgage, a note states the debt that's owed, the mortgage secures the note against certain collateral, in this case, the bulk service fee is kind of like a note, and the mortgage is the pledge of that bulk service fee to the state, in this case, we also have the pledge of the bond to the town, so we're secured both ways, by the Conference Center and by the bond, so this basically recites the deal. I know this got to you guys just today, my apologies. But here are the, this is the gravamen of the deal, we're having a bulk service fee, it pays loan number, which Corbett will fill in, it's the grant loan agreement. And it's going to be calculated on that outstanding amount, we all know that whatever that amount is, we don't know the amount, we've discussed that a hundred times tonight, it will, when it's established, it will start falling, the Conference Center has said, we'd like to be able to reduce our bond as that comes down, and over the coming ten years, so we've said, fine, we'll true that up annually, it also references the bond, the bond will be in the hundred and fifteen percent of the amount of the outstanding debt trued up from year to year, or time to time, here's where we go into the calculation of the bond amount, and the debt, and notes one and two show that they will change.
I apologize for not asking this earlier. If the number, if the obligation of the Camp and Conference Center was to, I mean, y'all made clear that this is, this is the minimum, the loan is gonna be at least this minimum amount, regardless of what it is, that's part of the deal with the state.
Yes.
Does the Camp and Conference, does the town, on behalf of the Camp and Conference Center, have the ability to get the SRF loan up to any imaginable level if the costs go up, or is there a limit to what the SRF loan can be?
There is no limit.
Okay, and so it is the Camp and Conference Center's intention, if they have obligations beyond that amount, to use that vehicle as a loan, not get money in another manner, correct?
Not sure I understand the question, so.
Let's just say, let's just, for the sake of, let's just say, your all's obligation ended up being five hundred grand instead of three hundred and seventy-five, you all are gonna, you're gonna, you're gonna ask us to do the SRF loan for five hundred grand, you're not going to say, let's do the three seventy-five, and then find a hundred and twenty-five somewhere else, correct?
I don't know that we've considered that. That would certainly, that would certainly be the preference, because it would be a zero percent.
Okay.
And no matter what, our obligation was be spelled out here, we'd still have to bond and collateralize one hundred and fifteen percent, and that payment would be whatever it is amortized over ten years.
I think Corbett answered my real question, and that was, there is, there is no, there's no upward limit, or there's no unreasonable upward limit as to what that loan can be.
No, you, you have up to the limit of the available funds at the state of Florida that they get allocated annually, which is over a hundred million.
Okay, okay, thanks.
And so, for, for, just so I'm clear on the record for them, if our obligation, if there's a cost overruns, and our obligation is suddenly five hundred thousand, we would, we would be looking for that to be added on to the loan, and then it would be five hundred thousand amortized over ten years, and collateralized at a hundred and fifteen percent pursuant to these terms that were spelled out, and then note one.
And change, and that would change the monthly rate of the bulk service agreement fee?
Correct.
Okay.
And then annually, that number for the bonding would go down corresponding?
It'll be trued up, because our bonds are gonna need to be renewed yearly, anyway, so this is a great way for it to coincide, because they're pledging, I don't know if any, you've dealt with getting a collateralized bond lately, but it's, it's dollar for dollar, so it's a good thing for the church to be able to true that up, you know, if we get a hundred thousand dollars paid off in one year, then great, we can true it for a hundred thousand, and you're still secured for what you need.
To cover the balance of.
You've got another fifteen percent on the other end, and then the SRF is still happy, because they're seeing it collateralized as well.
I presumed all that, I just wanted to kind of have it on the record, thank you.
I, I agree with you, that's good.
Can I ask a question, though, just in, on that comment?
Can I ask a question though, just in, on that comment? Supposing, supposing there are overruns in the cost. What I thought I heard was the district would seek a loan for that. And I'm not, I'm not sure.
No, it's an addition on the SRF. If we, we have an option there. If we needed to get, say, there was a hundred fifty thousand dollars in cost overruns over the three hundred some thousand. As Corbett said, we can go to the SRF and say, give us another hundred fifty thousand at zero percent to be amortized over ten years.
Right. That's a, that's a loan. You're, you're also able to go to the SRF and say, give additional grant money. Could you not?
Probably not.
Okay.
Probably not. We can ask, but I would expect it to probably be loaned. Simply because they only have so many grant dollars. And once they've made that available, that's the amount of grants.
That you're saying.
The, the hope is though, that's where the six hundred thousand dollars comes into play. And those overruns are, are paid for out of the six hundred thousand. And that, and we don't have to utilize all that, which leaves them with their minimal obligation of three seventy-five.
Right.
Okay.
Otherwise it brings.
There's something in there that says you can't go for any additional grant. You can't, you can't put in for any additional grants. You would have to be alone. If there's some verbiage in there somewhere in the fifty-five pages.
Okay. I didn't mean to confuse you. Go ahead, Mr. Harris. Are you good, Mr. Wilson?
Do you have something, Dr. Wilson?
Let me say it out, let me say it out loud.
Sure.
Of course, if we can get a grant rather than a loan, we're going there first.
Sure. Absolutely. Yeah. The other, but the other thing I was going to mention, and you're absolutely right. The other thing I was going to mention is if we have overrun, back to your question. One option is to, to add to the loan. But that's probably where the question gets raised. We went to an eight inch. Who pays for this extra? Right? So I wouldn't assume that the district is, is right now saying we're committing to all of, all of that. We're hoping.
We're not backdooring the commitment on the eight inch. We're thinking that the eight inch is going to be funded by the six hundred that's unencumbered.
Agreed. Right. I just didn't want an implication on our answer to Mr. Royce's question there.
No trick.
All right.
Palms up.
Okay. I didn't, I mean, I cut you off. Finish up with this, Mr. Wilson.
I think the obvious, let me state what I think is the obvious. We wouldn't be doing this document now if we didn't have to. We have to because we got to keep DEP happy, period. We're going to have to come back between the conference center and the town. I think when we get a contract and refine every one of these numbers, at that point, we will have precision and finality. Fair statement? Fair statement, Matt?
That's a true statement. And we've contemplated that in both the bulk service agreement and in the third agreement as well.
And so what I, if I could, what I think I heard you say is we will presumably approve these documents tonight with the numbers that are in them. But this council has the ability right up to accepting the bid to be able to say, okay, now we need to theoretically amend some of these, the amounts of some of these documents.
Right.
Precisely.
Okay.
We, and we're all on the same page. There's no other way to do it.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
In other words, we're not doing the contract if we don't have the money right.
Okay.
Period.
Okay.
Are there any questions regarding this or any of the documents?
Mr. Wilson?
Now, we're going to be going through one by one.
We're going to accept them. We're gonna, we're gonna vote on them one by one, Mr. Harris?
Um, yes, let's.
Ms. Hayes, you have any questions before we? So, Mr. Harris, you said you wanted a week, or to the point where you can make a recommendation to council members on items A, B, and C, and D, or whatever. I mean, can you make, I would encourage you to make a recommendation, a recommended motion for a council member to consider making a motion. One at a time.
So we're starting.
Mr. Barber, I should ask you, is there anything else you want to say before we head down this path?
Just to formality, the, the mayor will have to sign all these SRF documents, the actual mayor.
Right.
Because he's got the original.
Yeah, we were allowed, we were able to have Ray sign in his absence on some things. But Corbett has said for these SRF ones, the mayor has to sign.
Good thing is he's in town. You all can find him.
Perfect.
First one would be, I move we accept and enter the FDEP construction loan agreement and grant agreement.
As amended, because you did make a few changes.
Yeah, you made some changes in that.
I thought. Do us some sections in.
Not in this one.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion amongst the council? Anyone from the public? Seeing none. Eva?
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Rice?
Yes.
Next would be a motion to accept, approve, and enter the bulk wastewater agreement with the Camp and Conference Center.
No amendments in that one?
No.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any further conversation, discussion up here? Anyone from the public? Seeing none. Eva?
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Rice?
Yes.
Number three would be a motion, would be, I move to approve and adopt the resolution pledging the bulk wastewater income. No changes.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Anyone from the public? Hearing none. Eva?
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Rice?
Yes.
The next resolu, or motion, and this is the one that has the change in it, would be to approve the third agreement with the Camp and Conference Center authorizing staff to delete paragraph nineteen, which referenced the wastewater pioneering agreement.
So moved.
Ms. Hayes?
The second, but it renumbers everything else as well.
Yes, we'll renumber everything else.
Everyone understands, okay? Any further conversation, discussion amongst the council? Anyone from the public? Seeing none. Eva?
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Rice?
Yes.
The resolution will also be corrected to reflect the vice mayor presided. You don't need action on my proposed opinion letter. We will be asking the mayor to sign a letter to DEP explaining why this has taken so long and our proposed schedule. If you would approve the mayor sending such a letter. Language would be, I move we ask the mayor, council, ask the mayor to send a letter approved by council me to FDEP explaining the status of our grant loan agreement.
Any questions? Mr. Wilson, make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Ms. Hayes? Any further discussion? Anyone from the public? Hearing none. Eva?
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Rice?
Yes.
I would like one other motion and that would be to authorize the town attorney to make any corrections regarding, and I'm not looking at correcting concepts at all, but if we need to rename, for example, the bulk service agreement to the bulk fee agreement. There may be some between all of the documents where we have misnamed.
To match them, so they're consistent throughout all the, all the resolutions.
All the terminology consistent.
Yep.
I'll make that motion.
And I'll second that motion as well.
Any further discussion? Anyone from the public? Seeing none. Eva?
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Rice?
Yes. Does that take care of all the business we have to the Lake and Campers? So we're making tremendous progress.
That's it, everything?
Corbett, Matt, Dr. Wilson, thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate the council work.
Is there anything that you all would like to share before you leave?
I have enjoyed talking to Bert early in the morning by cell phone. And both of us getting each other going in the right way.
We have had a good working relationship. I too have enjoyed it.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Thank you all for your time.
Okay.
This will be back before us at the next meeting to discuss scheduling. Hopefully we'll have that resolved well in advance.
Okay. So I believe we're in it. Are we ready, Mr. Harris, to move on to item number two?
Yes, we are.
Again, with the council's permission, I'm just going to let Mr. Harris lead us through this action, if that's okay. Mr. Wilson, Ms. Hayes?
Lead on. Get the right mouse.
Joe and I have worked through this resolution. Eva, do you have a number for it yet?
I do not, but.
Okay, don't worry about it. Not a big, not a great moment. The clerk.
I'll use it. I'll just number it for our internal.
Sure.
Small deal again in the first paragraph. You need to make the change of the mayor's.
Yep. You will see a lot of this looks familiar. It tracks, the introduction part of it tracks the same resolution we adopted a year ago seeking the same type of grant. We reference that we're in the BMAP area for Northern Lake Okeechobee. We're in, the Department of Economic Opportunity has designated Highlands County a rural area of opportunity. And we are a rural community. So we meet the criteria for the loan. And you only have to meet one of them. We meet all three. We talk about our regional utility agreement with the Board of County Commissioners. And we talk about the need to provide wastewater services to an area of thirty thousand people. And a lot of the lakes around. Cost of service, we're telling, reminding them that we're a community of two thousand two hundred and twenty-three citizens, as of a year ago at least. And we don't have the money to provide water and sewer services, primarily sewer, to thirty thousand people around us. So that's the basis for the grant. We remind them that they've been good enough to give us a prior grant. And that our engineers' estimates have come in way above the anticipated cost. So this is the forty, this is referring to the forty million dollar grant already awarded. And we're telling them that we're having to use low pressure lines for the collection lines, which is going to drive up the cost of connection. This is where we authorize this town staff to seek grants for the low pressure. Joe and I have agreed to change this paragraph six to delete everything after the cursor. So we would only be seeking, and Joe and I, of course, there's two ways to do it. He and I'll both take one. I won't tell you who said which to protect the guilty. But what we were discussing last meeting, asking for hookups as well as Sun and Lake and Highway Park. Our real concern is, we're talking about some pretty big numbers again. Hookups alone will be twenty-five million. So we agreed to eliminate the reference to Highway Park and Sun and Lake. Because if we don't get a grant, it's, all of our lives are going to be miserable for the next few years going through the hookup process. So we recommend that the town state that's the priority grant, period, over and out, full stop. Not confuse it with anything else. If you want to go for the others, then we'll leave in Sun and Lake and Highway Park.
Well, there again, if you're going for those, and by the time you get to the other end through the process and then the approval process will be twelve, eighteen months from now. By the time you get designs and everything, you're already looking backward in numbers to what you think you're going to be able to do at that point anyway. To me, my personal opinion, it's more important to get as many hookups with the initial grant that we have, not just put them in place, but get them hooked up.
Yep.
And I think Ms. Hayes has said that and I've obviously told Mr. Harris that on many, many occasions.
Many times I've said that, yes. It's useless if people don't hook up to it.
So this paragraph will just be, it'll end being constructed under FDEP grant, period.
Period.
Said another way, the town attorney heard all three of you last time. Projects, probably take that one out because we don't rank projects anymore. Seven, one, I will say, most of this stays in. Joe and I boxed around about whether to tell DEP, look, we're willing to do it any way you make us say it, recommend. We can do it as grants. We can get a pot of money and lend it out and collect it on the utility bills. We can do impact fee waivers. We can say, look, we're giving you whatever incentives we do and then we're going to terminate it in year five. We ended up just saying, take all of that out and ask for twenty-five million bucks and see what they say.
Okay.
If you approve.
Y'all good with that? Mr. Wilson, Ms. Hayes?
You scroll so much with that handy mouse. Where are you at?
I am on page fifty-two.
Corbett, it looks like the updated one is on.
There won't be anything that, you're gonna, you're gonna delete anything that says the town will use the following tools. That all goes, that and everything below it goes away.
Correct.
What I'm looking at, there's both of those on here. It's like our old one and the new one. So like page forty-five.
Oh, is the new one in here as well?
Yeah. So I think you're looking at our, the old one and then we amended. I think go to page forty-five, I think is where it starts.
Let's finish with this one. So then we'll run through forty-five a lot quicker.
Okay.
So anyway, seven point one gets changed to just connections if you agree with Bert and Joe. We'll take out all of the options for how we do, or just say, give us money. Highway Park comes out. Sun and Lake comes out.
So seven, two, seven, three are gone.
Yes. Then we give the mayor the authority to sign it. All right. What page? Did you say forty-five?
Yeah, if you go back to page forty-five. Some of the thought behind this was there's nothing to stop us
Say that.
To apply for these in the future, like the Highway Park, the Sun and Lakes. And yet that stage in time, after we've proven we've been doing good and doing a good job, DEP would be inclined to help us some more, I think. You know, and then we could tie maybe another plant or some other upgrades into the next go around.
My opinion, it's, it's better to do one thing right than get out there and.
We're spread pretty thin, right?
Yeah, yeah. And I'm, I'm.
And the way DEP looks at these, like when, when the first one went in, they just look at that big number. So they don't really, I don't think they're going to dig in and say, well, we only want to do this piece. So I, I do think this idea of just hitting them with this one number and that's what they're going to look at. And only these hookups probably might be our best chance.
So this is, we're about to go through the cleaned up version?
Yes.
I think so. We're about to find out. Wow. I mean, page forty-five?
Forty-five, I think, is the cleaned up after we, Bert and I boxed.
Looks like the same thing.
Yeah, that's where I was at and I couldn't figure where you were at. Because none of the other stuff was on this one.
I'm crazy.
I think this is the cleaned up version.
On page forty-eight, like you, and then page forty-seven.
I'm on forty-five and that's the starting point of it. It has the same three criteria. We say we are the regional utility. We run, or this is the, again, we're looking to serve thirty thousand people in our area. We're twenty-three hundred people. We've got your grant award. We recite that, that we're underway. And we want to use all of that for the plant and collection lines. And then here's where we say, we're asking for twenty-five million to assist the town with hooking up hooks to the low pressure line.
Right.
Okay.
And then we go with number seven.
And then seven is just connections. Seven, one, and two are gone.
I've already taken out the stuff. So this just says, we want to pay for the connections.
Yeah.
Um, and he's got the authority. Now, someone was telling me at the very top of it, I left in the Sun and Lake somewhere. Let me look. Up there. Maybe we're good. So anyway.
A little bit of cleanup on that one, but that's the, the meat of.
What, what do you need to change on this? This is the cleaned up one.
The final numbers, there's two section sevens.
They need to reconcile?
Six, seven, seven. Okay, I'll renumber the last seven. What else?
I didn't see anything that said Sun and Lake was.
I didn't either.
I don't, I don't see Sun and Lake.
Somebody mentioned that to me. Oh, well. Good.
Obviously, even on the cleaned up version, Eva will need to take the mayor's name out in the first paragraph, just so we're accurate. So this is, to be clear, if there's a motion, this is the version we're going to be considering.
This is the version that Joe and Bert recommend.
Okay. Is there any other question, is there any questions?
This would be on first reading.
Only one reading in a. Only one reading and adoption.
Okay.
Ordinance is get the two.
Any questions, Ms. Hayes?
No, sir, I'm good.
Okay, Chair, Lieutenant, motion to approve this, the resolution we are looking at at this time?
I'm up.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Any further conversation or discussion? Anything else, Mr. Harris? Mr. Barber? Anyone from the public? Seeing none? Eva?
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rice?
Yes.
Is this all the business we had to do in regards to the FDPE grant? Is there any updates that you wanna make us aware of, or...
The large grant?
Yes.
Yesterday, we met on-site with the folks designing the wastewater treatment plant. They've been making pretty good progress on that. They've got some preliminary numbers and have got started work, got started working. I also have a proposal for shutting down the south plant and installing a force main on Lake Mirror Drive, which, now that all the modeling is complete, we have seen the areas that are gonna need improvement, and we can see how this is all gonna tie together. So the modeling is also complete, we should have a report on that. Been working with them to finalize that shortly. And then there's one other document we're trying to get some clarification on before we can submit everything to have the finalized grant agreement. So as soon as we get some clarification on that, we should have a finalized grant agreement. DO will accept it on their side, and we can start applying for reimbursements.
Wait a minute, what did you say, we're waiting on the grant agreement?
There's one form that they sent us.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Remember, there's something we don't quite understand. We gotta get some clarification on, but it's, it should be sent.
Let's talk about that, or do you wanna explain that one, or do you want me to?
I'll let you take a shot at it first.
DEO came up with another form that we have to complete, and it has data that I have no clue about, and neither does Joe. We have contacted another grant writer that Ray actually found. Ray and I met with her, she seems pretty competent. She said 1,500 bucks, she can make that go. So I have recommended to Phil that we sign that, it's within his authority, it'll be billed under the grant, and we hope paid, but I'd sure like to see y'all... We're not going, we cannot approve that tonight. Just wanted to make you aware of it. If anybody starts threatening to fire the town attorney, I'll call her and tell her to stop, but I'm hoping you'll approve that retroactively next meeting.
Yeah, there was Davis Bacon requirements, which, you know, I'm semi-familiar with, and then some new National Labor Relations Act that was put in there, I'm not familiar with. So we gotta get some clarification on that before that form can be signed, but as soon as we do, I think they have everything they need, and they'll execute that, the agreement on their end, and that'll open me up to start applying for some reimbursements and really get going.
Any questions, Mr. Wilson, Ms. Hayes?
No, sir.
Were we gonna have any discussions on any possible rate adjustments for the upcoming budget at this meeting?
Not at this meeting.
Okay, that'll be at our next regular scheduled meeting. Okay.
Is there anything else in regards to FDPE grant?
No, sir.
Okay. So I think we're through all our agenda items.
Sir.
Is there, for the good of the order, Mr. Harris, was there anything else, any other town goings-on that you need to share with us, or...
No, it really, really can't go beyond the scope of that agenda, so...
Well, I wasn't for talking about decision, I was just talking about from an informational standpoint.
No, I think we've...
Okay.
...burnt you with all we've got.
Okay, then before we adjourn, Ms. Hayes, anything from you for the good of the order?
You mentioned about, something about your, the force main on Lake Mirror Drive, is that gonna be affected at all by the DOT construction down there?
I don't think so. They'll just be boring under the road, so it shouldn't, we'll obviously have to get a DOT and a railroad permit, which will be difficult, but it shouldn't affect their construction at all.
Because they're just putting lanes, they're not putting a traffic light there, they're just putting lanes, so...
Yeah, we won't be open-cutting that road where they cross it, they, they directional drill under it, so we won't, we won't touch any of the new stuff.
Okay. Then I have nothing else.
Mr. Wilson?
I have nothing.
Okay. I think some good news, Mr. Barber, you know, you all have heard me a couple times ask him about this pipe bursting project, and Mr. Barber's told me that we are about to be able to go to bid, and we're moving forward, and so I look forward to going to bid. I know we've already spent quite a bit of money with, money with Mr. Al today to do that, so I look forward to getting that project completed, and of course, Joe, let's just